Want to call the East Green Bush Central School District Board of Education Public Hearing Opening, call to order. Present this evening, we have Cheryl, Michelle, Mark, myself, Kathleen, and Emily, Mr. Dunn, Ms. O'Brien, and Ms. Taylor will not be with us this evening. So with that, please join, join me with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first part of our meeting this evening is the public hearing on the budget. This meeting happens every year as we go through and present the budget to the community, hear any comments, and introduce our candidates. So I will turn over to Mr. Simons for the presentation of the 2324 school budget.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. I want to welcome all of the board members to the meeting this evening, the members of the community who took time to come out to our public hearing to hear about the proposed budget for next school year, and those that are participating via the live stream. I want to start by thanking the board for doing together on the budget over the course of the last several months. The budget process really starts in February as we start to learn a little bit more information about what the state might be proposing in terms of the state budget. And one of the gaps in my communication and planning tonight is I left my clicker right over there at the seat, so I'll be right back. So this is the formal budget hearing this evening that is required by New York State. The purpose of the hearing is to keep our citizens informed regarding the budget itself, but also the planning process that has led up to the budget, some of the considerations that we faced regarding the expenses and revenues for next year, as well as making sure that the public is aware of how you can participate in both the vote for the budget, any other related propositions, such as we have a bus purchase reserve that we will share with you, and the election of board candidates. This fulfills the requirement of New York State, the presentation, the board waived the reading of the public notice because the presentation fills that purpose. So at this time, I'll ask Peter to pull up the presentation. You want to advance the slides for me? All right. There we go. So each time we put together the spending plan to propose to the community, the board asks the district administration to ensure that what we plan to spend next year and the programs and the activities that we plan to fund through the budget aligns with the Board of Education goals. This year, the Board of Education reevaluated its goals for the purpose of identifying where we were at as a school district after the pandemic, as well as looking forward to future student needs. The board has asked the district to put programs in place at the instructional level and the extracurricular level that are future-oriented, that we ensure that through our curriculum, our professional development, that we provide our teachers and staff, and our classroom instruction, that we're preparing students to be prepared with the knowledge, the skills, and the dispositions that they need for their future. We know that the work that our students will be facing, whether they choose to go into a college track, whether they go right into the careers, or they choose to serve in the military, will involve critical thinking, effective communication skills, problem solving, and learning how to work in a very unstructured and perhaps less predictable environment than what we know today, utilization of technology and applying that technology. So one of the board's goals is to ensure that we are future-driven in the way that we prepare our students. Secondly, in addition to the board ensuring that within the budget, the academic needs of the students are met, it's a priority of our Board of Education to ensure that the social, emotional, mental health needs are also met. And so within the budget, we include such things as mental health services. For example, we currently operate a satellite mental health clinic at Columbia High School, as well as Goff Middle School through an arrangement with the county. Additionally, we have preventative services in place for students who may be facing drug and alcohol abuse issues. We have that position at the high school and the middle school. We've increased the number of social workers that we have within the district because we know that student mental health is a big concern across our country. We want to make sure that the academic needs of the kids are met, but they cannot be successful as learners and as students if we don't address the social, emotional piece and have those supports in place. So the board has made that a critical priority. Additionally, and very importantly, our board has always emphasized through its work within the district with its stakeholders that we want to have a safe learning environment for all students. That not only includes the infrastructure of our buildings and our buses to keep the kids safe and the staff safe, it also includes emotional safety. Do the students, the employees, and the visitors to our school district feel welcome? Does everyone feel included? We have a committee called the Committee for Global Education that has been working on strategies and plans to make sure that our schools are as welcoming as invitational so that everybody has a sense of belonging. And we're working on areas such as diversity, equity, and inclusion, and making sure that as we deal with some of the academic expectations, we make sure that our students, no matter what their background, our employees, no matter what their background, our community, no matter what the situation, feel like East Green Bush is their home. So future-driven education, addressing the needs of the whole child, and making sure that we promote a safe and inclusive environment through our policies and our practices. Additionally, the budget supports the excellence in teaching that we offer within the district. Each and every year, we have a number of teachers who are identified as top teachers by Channel 13 News. This year, Steve Lapola, who was a veteran social studies and history teacher at Columbia High School, was recognized as a Channel 13 top teacher. Liz Griffin, who was our library media specialist at Red Mill Elementary School, was also recognized as a top teacher by Channel News 13. It's really important that the budget support the professional development and the curriculum development and the supports that are necessary to have exceptional teachers like we have within East Green Bush. Additionally, each year, the East Green Bush Teachers Association selects one of the professionals among approximately 340 professionals within the EGTA to be the EGTA Educator of the Year. And this year, Ally Harling, who is a speech therapist within the district, was selected by the EGTA. And earlier in the school year, our school board recognized Liz Corey, who was a special education teacher at Janay Elementary School, as the Special Educator of the Year, which is selected by a committee that represents parents of students with disabilities within our district. Additionally, there's too many student achievements, presentations that we could do. We would be here all year talking about the success of our students. Just a couple of examples. Teddy Howard is a member of our graduating class this year. He has been named as a National Merit Scholarship finalist. That's a very hard thing to achieve, and we congratulate Teddy Howard for representing our school district so well with his outstanding achievement. Additionally, we have a program at Columbia High School called the Science Research Program where our kids do authentic research in a field of science, and they present that information in their research to community groups. And Anara Ilsa, who's a member of the class of 2024, she did a project that studied the waterways, the streams, and the canals here in Rensselaer County, and took a look at some of the issues around pollution and environment regarding those streams, and she presented that project as part of the science research project and was recognized for that. Additionally, Elena Moreno, she's a member of our senior class this year, she won the Greater Capital Region Science and Engineering Fair for a project that she did in the area of health science for her science research class. Many exceptional recognitions of our students. We boast of a very successful athletic program, but one of the things that we like to share with our community is not only are our students who participate in sports successful on the athletic fields, but their academic grades reflect their scholarship within the classroom. This winter, all nine winter sports teams received the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete Award, and that is because the students on those teams all maintained a very high grade point average above 90. Additionally, we brought back some really great academic in-person activities this year to emphasize the knowledge and the skills that our students are acquiring. Goff Middle School hosted their annual 2023 History Bee, and it was quite an exciting contest, and it kind of came down to the end to two or three middle school people competing to answer very challenging questions and advancing through round after round on the History Bee. And we do a lot of work to facilitate our students volunteering in the community because we recognize by giving back to the community, the community gives back in a supportive environment for our kids to learn. Red Mill School, for example, raised more than $10,000 for the Ronald McDonald House, which is an incredible accomplishment for elementary students. Additionally, within the last two weeks, we're very proud to boast, and we're not beyond boasting in the East Green Bush a little bit, but we are humble in our efforts to continue to try to get the best service to the students as possible. But for two years in a row, two consecutive years in a row, through a program, the Times Union sponsors called Best of the Best, East Green Bush was voted as the best school district in the capital region by our community. That is really a measure of the community's support for our district. We're grateful for that, but we don't take that for granted. We are always striving, under our board's policy, for continuous improvement and engagement with our community. So as we shift to talking specifically about the budget, we are providing within the budget the resources that are essential for continuing all of our current programs. There are no program cuts included within the budget. In fact, there are some additional programs that we feel are necessary to support the academic and social, emotional needs of the students. Additionally, we are mindful, and our board is very mindful, of the importance of making sure that the resources that we are provided either from the state or through the local tax base are used as efficiently and effectively as possible. And this is a year-round process where our board asks us difficult questions to make sure that as we are looking at the budget and the management of the budget throughout the year, that the dollars that we spend are going to help students be successful and always being mindful of our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. Additionally, our board maintains both a short-term planning for next year's budget, but also there is a long-range focus. The Board Finance and Audit Committee takes a look at information that's presented from the district's Director of Business and Finance to make sure that we are a stable district. In accordance with the New York State Comptroller's Office, our district is not considered to be in fiscal stress. We also have a very good bond rating, one of the best bond ratings that a public organization, school district, can receive, which enables the district to borrow money at very low interest rates for such things as capital construction projects and purchases of other items such as, at times, such as buses. Additionally, this particular budget that we are proposing of $108.8 million has some flexibility within it to address if we have enrollment shifts during the year and our, during the summer, and our class sizes go up, we can add a teacher if necessary. We also are having conversations about how we can strengthen our school's safety. Okay, we feel we do a very good job, but as issues have come up most recently regarding some of the threats, the board and the district's safety committee are continuing to evaluate what other provisions might be necessary to keep our students and our staff safe. And mental health is also continuing to be a concern. So we don't, we don't anticipate at this time of year, knowing everything that we need to do to put into place for September, but we leave room within the budget to be able to address some of those contingencies. And the board has asked us to prioritize class size reduction, school safety, and mental health, to leave a little bit of room in case we need to make adjustments. As we shift to some of the financial data, it's very important that the community understand how the trends in financing our school district have occurred over the course of the last several years. Several years ago, the district was challenged by significant cuts in state aid, and there was a period of time in which the amount of state aid that we were supposed to get under a statewide formula, the foundation formula, was reduced dramatically. And you go back to the years of 2008, 2009, 2010, prior to this graph, the board had to make some very difficult decisions. Over the course of the last several years, the board has looked at the amount that the district is authorized by New York State through the property tax cap to raise the overall tax levy and given direction to the district's administration to keep the proposed tax levy under the tax cap. And you can see that during the course of the years, 2016, really till about four years ago, the board, even during some difficult times where we were not getting as much state aid as we are getting for next year, made a deliberate effort to keep the tax levy proposed within the budget under the cap. The blue graph represents the amount that New York State says the district, East Green Bush, is allowed to raise the tax levy. It's not a 2% tax cap. It's a specific formula that we have presented at public meetings in the past. That formula has indicated that the board could have, with a 50% vote, raised the tax levy more than it chose to do. And that's, again, meeting their fiduciary responsibility to keep the tax levy as low as they can, but also maintaining programs and services. But over the last four years, you can see that the tax levy increases have been very, very small. Why is that? Because the board was receiving increases in state aid, which enabled the board to do that. So, for example, last year and the year before, our board came out to the voters with a 0% increase in the tax levy. This year, the New York State Property Tax Cap indicated that our board could have raised the taxes 3.96%, but are choosing to only raise the taxes a half of 1%. That half of 1% yields approximately $291,000 in revenue to the district. We're doing that so that we can fund some of the additional things that we have in the district, but also mindful of the fact that next year and the following year, now that we have been made whole in our state aid, we expect smaller increases in state aid moving forward. So the average, and this is very important, increase in our tax levy over the course of the last three years has been 0.167%, very low, one of the lowest in the region. And I thank the board for making sure that we balance the educational needs of the students with the capacity of the community to pay increases in the tax levy. The half of 1% increase in the tax levy may not result in increases in individual citizens' tax bills, and that is because we're only raising the taxes a little bit, but the property tax base within East Green Bush School District has increased quite a bit. There is residential and commercial development that has occurred within the district. So many taxpayers, when they get their tax bill next year, will see either no change in their tax bill, or in some cases, they may see a decrease in their tax bill because the tax base is growing in East Green Bush. So the board only controls the tax levy. How much money do we need to collect to fund the budget? We're doing it just a little bit, but the tax base in East Green Bush has been growing at a very good rate. In fact, I think at the highest rate in Rensselaer County because of the development that's occurring. So many citizens will not see any change in their tax bill compared to last year, and some will see a decrease. So on the ballot, on May 16th, the voters will see a proposed budget spending plan of $108.8 million. You will also see a separate proposition the board and the community is pretty familiar with, the fact that our district for a long time has had a bus purchase reserve. Bus purchase reserve is approved by the board and approved by the voters and required to be funded at a certain level. Monies that are set aside in a reserve for the sole purpose of purchasing buses. We utilize the reserve to purchase newer buses that have, and replace older buses that are aging, have higher mileage, require more maintenance. Monies flow back to the district through transportation aid at about 69.5%. So 69 cents of every dollar that we take out of the reserve comes back to the district and goes right back into the reserve to furnish the bus replacement schedule that we've had in place. We have about 102 buses in the district. And the third item you will see on the ballot is the election of three board members for three seats, and there are four candidates, and we'll talk about the candidates in just a little bit. So we have four candidates for three seats and the election of the board. So three propositions on the ballot on May 16th. The election of board candidates follows a state process that is determined by New York State. The candidates were required to submit applications and petitions by the deadline of April 17th. We had four individuals who met that deadline. The four candidates for three open seats are the incumbent board president, Michael Buno, the incumbent vice president, Mark Mann, Jesse Temple, who is here, he's a citizen and a parent in the East Green Bush Central School District, Andy Garrigan, who cannot be here tonight. So we appreciate the incumbent board members stepping forward again to serve our community, and we appreciate new citizens coming forward who are of interest in supporting our school district and stepping forward. So there's an opportunity to vote for those individuals on May 16th. The bus proposition reserve I talked about, we plan to purchase eight buses at a cost of $965,000. We replace high-mileage buses that are requiring more maintenance. There's a 66-passenger bus, which is our larger buses. We plan to order four of them if it's approved. There is a 30-passenger bus, which is one of the smaller buses. There are two of those that we are seeking to purchase, and we need to replace two wheelchair buses. Again, the cost is $965,386. Those monies come out of monies that have already been authorized by the board and the community to set aside, again, for the sole purpose of bus purchases. We now move to talking about the public hearing notice. The information that I'm going to present now is required by New York State. We will present the location and the time of the public hearing. We are meeting here now. We are presenting at the public hearing. Additionally, every citizen within the community, every employee, is entitled to a copy of the specific budget documents. We'll let you know where you can get those budget documents at any time between now and May 16th. We'll give you information about the voting date and the propositions, which we've already talked about. We're required to also talk about the election of board members, voting locations and districts where people are to vote, voter registration and inspection of the registry, the qualifications to be a voter, and we'll talk about the process to apply if you need to vote via absentee ballot. So in accordance with the public notice requirements, the district is required to publish the notice in two newspapers four times within 45 days. The Albany Times Union and the Troy Record are the official newspapers of publication for the East Green Bush School District. We have to do that preceding the May 16th vote. The public notice is also available on the district's website. The budget packets, which list all of the expenditures and the revenues proposed within the budget, line by line, by budget code, those are available for anyone who would like one at the central office at 29 Englewood Ave, near the Janay Building, off the Janay Building, or all school buildings. Also, we are required to have those documents available in the public libraries, East Green Bush, North Green Bush, Sand Lake, and Nassau libraries. Additionally, you can access the budget documents on the website and also just call the board clerk, which is Jean Pangburn, and you can ask for a copy of it, and she will get that to you. The budget packet includes a summary of the district's revenues, including state aid, local property taxes, payment in lieu of taxes revenues, as well as other miscellaneous revenues. There's also something in that document that lists, line by line, all of the expenditures by category. If you look at that document, you have any questions, you can always call Linda Wager, the Director of Business and Finance, and she's very accessible and transparent and happy to answer any questions you might have. The property tax report card is something that is on the board's agenda for this evening for approval at the regular meeting. That information is required by New York State. It compares budget information from the current year to next year within the proposed budget, including the property tax levy increase. There's a requirement called the three-part budget. We're required to break our spending plan down into three major categories. The administrative budget, how much do we spend on categories of the budget that are administrative? How much money do we spend on capital? For example, principal and interest on our, some of our bonding that we have done to repair and maintain our school facilities. And then there's the program budget, which is the teachers, the support staff, the instructional program. So that is also included within the documents. And there's also something called the administrative salary disclosure. Certain administrators within school districts that have titles such as mine, superintendent of schools, deputy superintendent, or assistant superintendent, are required to be part of the salary disclosure. Additionally, I believe it is this year, any administrator within a school district that earns more than $168,000 salary, we report that information to the public, we report it to the state, and the state tracks that information. Additionally, we have enrollment data that's available through the budget packets. We also have data that is required on the number of English-language learners that we educate. We have a growing population within our district of students who receive English as a new language services. Those services are provided at Janay Elementary School, Red Mill Elementary School, Goff Middle School, and Columbia High School. There's also something called the ESA Financial Transparency Report, which is a federal requirement that requires school districts to take their budget and show that they are equitably distributing the budget across multiple schools to make sure that we are, we are taking that budget and we are serving the needs of each building. There's a property tax exemption report, which lists properties that are exempted from local property taxes, and then the ballot propositions. So the voting will occur on May 16th. The polls open from 7:00, at 7:00 a.m., and they will close at 9:00. The methodology for voting will be the electronic voting machines, and again, we have three board vacancies and four candidates. Voting location number one in Nassau is the Donald P. Southern Elementary School. That location serves the voters who are residents of the town of Sand Lake and Chatham, as well as residents with a Nassau mailing address. Voting location two is Green Meadow Elementary School, which serves the residents of the town of Skodak, who do not have a Nassau mailing address. Goff Middle School serves as voting location number three, and that is open to the residents of the town of East Green Bush. We've made an adjustment regarding safety. The voting location within Goff Middle School will be adjacent to an outside exit right in the cafeteria. Voters will be directed to where to park. They will be guided into going into the cafeteria through the exit and entrance. They will vote in the cafeteria, and they will come out. We are modifying the gym and setting that up just for the election day to serve lunch in the gym, and that way voters come in and voters come out, and they won't be able to access the hallways where the students may be passing from class to class. And voting location number four is the Belltop Elementary School, which is the voting location for the residents of North Green Bush. In each case, at all four voting locations, we've made some small adjustments to make sure that the voting locations are as close to an outside exit and entrance as possible. Voter registration is required unless you have voted in a school election in the past four years. You don't have to worry about registration if you voted in a school election in the last four years. However, you can register through the Rensselaer County Board of Elections, or you can do it at the district clerk's office, which is at the Janay Building at the Administrative Center from 8:00 to 4:00 on regular business days. But again, you don't have to register to vote if you voted in a school vote over the last four years. We are required to have the voter registration open for inspection of the public. That will occur between May 10th and May 15th during regular business hours, 8:00 to 4:00, except for Saturday, May 13th. The hours of operation to inspect the voting rolls, if you choose to, are from 8:00 to noon on Saturday, May 13th. In order to vote in a school election, you need to be a citizen of the United States, you need to be 18 years of age, you need to have been a resident of the district for at least 30 days preceding the vote, and you need to be registered to vote. Absentee ballots are available. You have to fill out an application. You can retain an application at the office of the district clerk or on our website. It's very important to be mindful of the due dates for an absentee ballot application. If you are sending it in by mail to us, it needs to be postmarked by May 9th. If you are bringing it in person, it needs to be there on May 15th, the day before the vote. That way, it can be included, your vote can be included within the tally of the vote on May 16th. After an application is received, the ballot will be issued. The ballots are due by May 16th before 5:00 p.m. So the day of the vote, if you have an absentee ballot, you have to get it to us at the office of the district clerk by the end of business, 5:00 o'clock on May 16th. The budget passes on the 16th. We will continue to move forward in planning for our school system in September. If the budget does not pass, under New York State law, we have the option to resubmit the budget for a second vote without modifications on June 20th, or the board can choose to revise and change the budget and put it out for a vote with a different budget. Or we could adopt a contingency budget, which would be effective, and there are certain rules of contingency, which you can't raise the tax. rules of contingency, which you can't raise the tax levy at all, or certain equipment purchases that you can't make, and our restrictions on community groups being allowed to use your facilities under contingency budget. It's a lot of information, uh, to go through in a, in a fairly, uh, fast pace. Just remind everybody, the budget documents packets are available for anyone who would like to take a closer look at our budget, and at this point, I'll take any questions from the board or from the community, uh, or ideas.
Any questions, board members? No? Okay. You've been through it, uh, the last few months. Glad to hear a state budget is great and finalized, finalized, I think. Yes? Never know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the presentation. Mr. Simons did already mention, um, on our presentations, the board candidates, myself, Mr. Mann, Mr. Temple, and Mr. Garrigan, who is not here. With that, I will open up the meeting to, um, any public comments at this time? Anyone? No? Okay. I will open up to the board. Any comments? Start my left, Cheryl? Michelle? Yeah? Mark? Kathleen? Emily? All right. Everybody had their say, so we are good to go. With that, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mark, second. Michelle, all those in favor? All right, the public meeting is closed. The public hearing, I should say, is closed. We will now move to our regular meeting. Let me just switch to that agenda. So, I will call the regular meeting to order 7:37. Tendence has remained the same. We did already do the pledge, and the next item, let's see, no approval, no draft minutes at this time. Then we go to board forum. Any general comments, board members? No? Okay. Moving to the public forum for the meeting, I will read the, uh, the public contact information. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns in the public forum. If response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and to state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed, the business forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited will be cleared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board this time? No? Okay. Seeing none, I will move on to our next item, which is discussion item on the draft board of ed meeting schedule for 2324. Oh. Oh. Did I, oh, sorry, they weren't on the agenda, were they?
It was my omission, uh, in my putting the agenda together on Friday and Saturday. So, that was my fault.
Come on up.
Members have come.
All right. Student Council, introductions. Emma and Rhone, how could I forget you guys? We've been here almost every meeting. You're on.
All right. Um, this past Monday was official college decision day at Columbia, and everyone wore shirts to show their future plans. And now that spring is here, it's finally time for prom, which is my favorite time of the year, and junior prom will be held on Saturday, May 20th, and senior prom is on Friday, June 2nd.
Our annual Columbian awards will be held the morning of senior prom, honoring students who have been chosen for scholarships and teacher-given awards. And finally, the National Honor Society induction will be held this Friday, May 5th, in the Columbia Auditorium, and on behalf of student council, we want to say congratulations to all of the inductees, and thank you all.
So, don't go away so quick. So, decision day. What are your plans after graduation?
So, I'm commended to UConn for the fall.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Rhone, anything?
Thank you very much.
All right. So, for the Columbian awards, I think we usually get an invite, at least information comes our way for board members to attend. Great ceremony if you can attend, um, those as well. Thank you for the reminder there about the student council. All right, we'll go to discussion items, the draft board of ed meeting schedule for 2324. It is in draft form. Hope you had a chance to look at that. Any comments or questions about that? Kathleen, I don't think you have to worry about that next year, but you're welcome to comment. Anything come out that looks?
We, uh, we kept to our plan from last year and are having one meeting in July. It does fall during the Fourth of July week, so if everyone could think about their vacation schedules. Um, the, the New York State regulations regarding the organizational meeting require that the organizational meeting occur on the first Tuesday of July, unless it falls on the Fourth. And this Tuesday, if, this year, it falls on Tuesday, the Fourth, so you can have it on Wednesday, the Fifth, or you can pass a resolution to move it to any meeting date of your choice within the first 15 days of July. We did that a few years ago. So, if July 5th doesn't work out, you have a quorum here for the organizational meeting. We can always pass a resolution and move it as long as the meeting is held between the first and the 15th.
So, take a look at those, the July 5th, the August 9th, the August 23rd, especially the 23rd, because I know it's pretty heavily personnel items, right, Marissa? And, uh, we want our staff to be able to start and be appointed, um, prior to the school session. So, take a look at those. I know that I may have some challenges with August. Emily will be busy. Right? So, the, uh, anything that conflicts, please let us know for the summer, especially the July 5th, so we can have it reorg. Okay.
So, if you want to email us between now and the next meeting, you know, or if there's an issue that you might anticipate, we'll either bring the agenda forward with a change or we'll bring this agenda forward, which is wait and see. You don't have to do that this, this month. There's no timeline on this, but we would like to get it in place.
Yeah, the board schedule is really up to us.
Not necessarily an issue, but why is there a couple on Tuesdays versus Wednesdays? I'm just curious. It, it boosts up my calendar on, I don't know.
So, there's legal requirements around the BOSI's budget.
Yes.
And then the annual meeting that happens is the 9th, and then the 23rd is, they have to have that by law, that budget has to be passed on that day.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. So, the 23rd is the required by law. Everybody, every board in the state has to vote on the BOSI's budget. We've made a choice to move the April 9th meeting to a Tuesday that week because we like to go to the board, the quest our annual.
Yeah, I think we used to do it, start it late. Yeah, sometimes we started it late, it's like 7:30. Great, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other comments, just email myself, Jeff, and we can take a look at that. All right. Moving on to regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? Kathleen, need a second? Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. We have a resolution to adopt an agreement. The board is aware of this agreement. Any questions on that? Need a motion to approve? Kathleen, need a second? Mark, all those in favor? Approved. And then we have the 2324 property tax card, tax report card. Any questions or comments on that? I don't know if we need to, this is the formal submission, right? We've been through this a few times.
Yes, this is the formal submission to SED. It basically, Mr. Simons referred to it, um, just shows the difference between our current year budget and our proposed budget for next year, uh, the, the increase in the budget itself, as well as the increase in the tax levy, and then it also explains a little bit about our reserves, where our reserves are as of 3:31, where we expect them to be as of 6:30.
Any questions for Linda? All right. Need a motion to approve the property tax report card? Mark, need a second? Cheryl? All those in favor? Approved. We don't have any table motions? Old business, board members? Anything? No? Moving on to the consent agenda. Items A through F, any questions or comments there? Now, we have a few retirements, so congratulations to those folks who are retiring. Anybody else? Senior or comments or questions? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Michelle, second. Cheryl? All those in favor? Approved. Going here pretty fast, so stop me if I, okay. We don't have any addends, addendums at this time? New business, board members? Emily? No? Okay. Public forum number two, second chance, address the board. Way in the back, Mr. Grignan.
I just want to congratulate Debbie Corbett on her retirement. Um, I worked with her a long time at Goff Middle School. She's been around the district for a long time, really sad to see her go, but very happy for her retirement. I'd be remiss if I did not also, at the last boarding, I was so enthralled with the budget discussion that I forgot to step up and say, congratulations to retirement, to my two secretaries, Darcy Mancino and Sandy Giordano, which are going to be a huge loss for Janay Elementary School. So, congratulations to everyone that's retiring, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grignan. Anyone else? No? Now move to the board forum. Am I right with Emily? Anything? No? Kathleen? Okay. Mark?
I just want to give a shout out. May is Mental Health Month awareness, and, and I can see we're starting to put things together in our each school, um, to, to support that, so thank you for that effort. It's critical for ours as a board.
Thank you for emphasizing and prioritizing, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Cheryl? I don't have anything at this time. We do have need for an executive session for purposes of negotiations, conversation. All right. We don't expect any board business after this, so, um, with that, I need a motion to move into executive session. Kathleen, second. Emily, all those in favor? All right, that's everybody. So, have a great night. Thank you, everyone.